Good evening. We are here for the Neutrona County Commissioners' regular meeting, Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, five P. M. The meeting's been called to order. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Friddel.
Here.
Commissioner Laird.
Present.
Commissioner Mill.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Nick Leeson.
Here. At this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Friddel, seconded by Commissioner North. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in executive session. Thank you.
...
All right, we are back for our Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular county commissioner meeting. Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to be applied in the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He said the front door was locked. At this time, I would ask for a modification to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask for a modification, motion to add item K.
Add to item K.
Add to item K, C O R number eight, reference fireplace.
Very good. There's been a motion to add C O R eight to item K. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
And that pertains to the Casper Mountain Trail Center to change orders. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been modified. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Been moved by Commissioner Freel, seconded by Commissioner North. Any discussion?
Dallas.
I apologize. It's been seconded by Commissioner Laird. I apologize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Those consent agenda items have been approved. We don't have any contracts, agreements, or resolutions. So at this time, we will move to the public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open for consideration of resolution forty-eight twenty-four, approval of the Neutrona County Wyoming budget resolution for fiscal year twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. Hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Neutrona County Commission, and other applicable laws. Madam Clerk, may we have a report?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, resolution forty-eight twenty-four is for the approval of the budget for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount of sixty-three million, six hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. This figure includes proposed budgets for Neutrona County's component entities, which are the Neutrona County Library, City County Health Department, Community Action Partnership, and Neutrona County Fair. As shown, the fiscal twenty-five budget provides for funding for mandated services, provides for citizens' health, safety, and welfare, creates a marketable and competitive wage scale, provides funding for various one-cent projects. All publication requirements have been met, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Are there Commissioner questions for the clerk? Any questions for the clerk? Very good. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of resolution forty-eight dash twenty-four to please approach the lectern. Second call for those wishing to speak in favor of resolution forty-eight twenty-four to approach the lectern. And third call for anyone wishing to speak in favor of resolution forty-eight dash twenty-four to please approach. Then, at this time, I'd ask for individuals wishing to speak in opposition of resolution forty-eight twenty-four to please approach. Those in opposition of resolution forty-eight twenty-four to please approach. And last call, for any individuals wishing to speak in opposition of resolution forty-eight dash twenty-four, please approach. There being no one to speak for or against resolution forty-eight twenty-four, I now declare the public hearing closed. I'd entertain a motion on resolution forty-eight twenty-four.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, sorry.
Forty-eight twenty-four.
Forty-eight twenty-four, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Milne, seconded by Commissioner Freel to approve resolution forty-eight dash twenty-four. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milne.
Budget's very large this year. I think we all recognize it was a lot of work to get through. I would really like to give my thanks to county clerk and her staff and everybody, the electeds. A lot of people stepped up, a lot of departments, offices stepped up and cut where they could, which is what we asked. So I'd really like to give all those people that did try to work with us as much as they could and supported us through this process. Just a hearty thank you. Really do appreciate. I don't know if we could get it through without you.
Thank you, Commissioner Milne. Any other discussion? You know, I'd like to echo those comments. Madam Clerk, thank you very much. You worked tirelessly on this. Heck, you're probably already starting to work on next fiscal year's budget. You do the lion's share of the work on this. You herd cats, and not just the five of us. You answer questions. You give us, you know, you take a lot of the calls, especially on a lot of the detail. So, thank you. And like Commissioner Milne said, thanks to your staff as well. I know that a lot of people do assist you. I also thank the other elected officials, and I thank our department heads. This was the most difficult of the three budget cycles that I've been through in terms of expenditures exceeding anticipated revenues. At the end of the day, I think, you know, we made a lot of reductions in expenditures where we could. And I think we were very responsible with the taxpayers' money. I feel good about where we're at. And I also feel good that we have some really important projects for the future of this community that are going to be funded. And if not completed this year, then at least started. So I'm proud of the work of this commission and those involved in getting us to where we are. All in favor of approving resolution forty-eight twenty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Very good. The budget's been approved. Just in time. So at this time, we are at the public comment section of the meeting. We have basically an invitation for members of the public to come up and speak for up to five minutes. You don't have to talk for the entire five minutes. But at this point, please approach the lectern if you'd like to give us your thoughts.
I do have thoughts. I am Rebecca Cedar, and I reside in Neutrona County. I've been a real estate agent in the state of Wyoming for thirty-five years, and I'm here to talk to you about the gravel pit, proposed gravel pit, and how the impact is of the homeowners up there. I think Steve Freel, being a real estate agent, probably can agree with me that there's a huge impact that can take place for those homeowners in the value of their properties. We've never had anything like this that I've had to deal with. I've had lots of ups and downs with the market, but nothing quite like this. This is a long-lasting effect on these properties and these homeowners who have spent their whole life to have a property like this and something that they value. It's their heart, their home, their memories, all that kind of stuff. And I just think it's a really terrible thing to pass in that area. It's a beautiful area. These people can live close to the city, have their jobs, doctors, whatever, be less than twenty minutes to town. And if you go up there, those properties are high-valued properties, very high-valued properties. They don't come on the market very often. Those homeowners stay there for a long time, and when they do come up, they sell really quickly. I think we've had one close recently before all this started. It went under contract. But I think it can be devastating to these homeowners. I think, I live on Garden Creek, and I'm not looking forward to it. I already hear the trucks going up the mountain, and I live quite a ways from that. The dust, the pollution, the water problems these homeowners will have with their houses. When I have people come to town looking for properties, and people in town, they want, they come to me and they say, we want a property in Wyoming that has land, views of the mountain, maybe some water, views of the river. We want to fish. We want to hunt. We want our kids to be able to experience the land around the property. This won't happen in that area. It will devastate the homeowners. What the values may be, it's hard to tell at this point, but I think it'll be substantial to them. My thing in investigating this is that there will have to be a conditional use permit made for that road because it is a state road. And I don't think it's been filed yet, but I know the commissioners are the ones that can put a kibosh to that. It's up to you guys to stop this. Possibly, they can go another route. The only route I can see them going is through Webb Creek, and that's private property. They will not be able to go through Webb Creek. Those homeowners will not allow that. And so I'm really hoping that you'll take into consideration the impact that it has on everybody, me too, and not just my business, but people I love in this community that look for properties like that. And that's their whole life. That's their big investment here. And I hope you'll really consider. The only thing that's going to stop it is that conditional use permit. And I hope every single one of you will vote against that because that's what it's going to take. And maybe there's another way he can go, but not through those homes. Please consider that. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Others wishing to speak? Good evening.
Evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Casey Coats, fifty-four, fifty-eight Coats Road. Just won't keep you along. Just want to thank everyone for the hard work they did on the budget. I know it was a lot of hours. I watched many of those, and so, thanks for your diligence and your expertise going through that. And just a quick message on behalf of the C M P A. They wanted me to let you know that they have surpassed sixteen thousand signatures. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment tonight? No one else? Therefore, we will switch to Commissioner comments. I will speak to the Casper Mountain Road five oh five in a minute, but Commissioner Laird, you want to start on Commissioner comments?
Thank you, Rebecca, for coming up and speaking. Thank you, Casey. How's your campaign going? I don't envy you having to go through it. You know, it's an interesting, it's an interesting thing to be a county commissioner. And no matter what anybody says to you, you won't know anything about it until you actually get on county commission. And so, so my view of it is primarily is that I'm here as a representative of the citizens, all of the citizens, all of them. All the ones that want to do business, all the ones that want to live here, all of them. And sometimes the citizens don't agree on things. And that's where we, as the commissioners, have to take a look at whether what's being done is in the best interest of our county. And will what's being done harm people, help people, create more jobs, cause confusion? We have to take it all into account, and we have to be fair to everybody. And so, I think that from what I heard earlier, what was said at the meeting earlier, that probably we're going to get a request for a conditional use permit pretty soon. It depends on what the state says. I've said this before. It's the state land that's at issue here, and the state has a land board commission of five people. It's all the elected officials. It's run by the governor, and they're the ones who decide whether the law has been met and whether the people should get a lease, and what they can do with it, and what they have to pay for it and all of that, and that's all done. They don't consult us on that at all. We, we sure would have liked to have been consulted because I think we could have explained a lot of things for the public and the area this was in. And I'm not too sure that when those leases got allowed, I don't think the Casper, Neutrona County people even knew that they were on the board. And I'm not too sure that some of the people on that commission knew that it was going to be right on the face of Casper Mountain. Megan Degenfelder, who lives here, voted for it. She's the superintendent of public instruction. And as near as I can tell, the only one who was really against it was Chuck Gray, who's the Secretary of State. I don't know if anybody's changed their mind yet or not, but we're not people they consult. They did come here, and they did go up there, that commission did, and I know some of the people who lived in that area showed them, showed them whereabouts all this was going to happen. I've consulted experts in gravel mining, and they've told me that these are difficult things. Nobody, nobody wants a gravel mine in their neighborhood, especially hundred and thirty thousand pound travel trucks running right down within twenty-five feet of their houses on gravel roads. Rebecca, the gravel road is a county road. It's not a state road. That's why we have some jurisdiction over it. And part of it, it was paved by the city, and I forget how much of it was paved by the city, but the man who ran that for the city came in and spoke and said that that pavement was never designed to hold hundred and thirty thousand pound trucks. And the D O T doesn't have anything that I know of going on because they don't want, the problem is, was big trucks like problem is, was big trucks like that pulling onto the highway and how dangerous that is and what has to be done. And different people said, "Well, you're going to have to have a stoplight there, and you're going to have to do this and do that." And all of these things are costly. Mr. Tru has said he would, you know, he would, if he damages people's water, he said he would drill a well or two or three. But when, if somebody's water is wiped out, I don't know how long it takes them to get a system up there and get water. We have, did have somebody come and flush their toilets. So, so it's, it's an interesting issue when people are doing something that's legal, and yet there's a very, there's a big conflict. You say 16,000 signatures. I've never even heard a petition in Wyoming that ever got that many signatures. And so I can understand that. I mean, I was born and raised here, and I know how nice it is in that area, and I also know a little bit about gravel pit mining. And so, we have to have a hearing. We have to give everybody a fair hearing. We have to listen to what everybody says, what testimony they present. And then, I'm a lawyer in Wyoming, so I have taken an oath in my legal profession to obey the laws of the state of Wyoming. And then when I became a commissioner, I had to take another oath to represent the people. And I intend to do that. And so, I'm trying to become as knowledgeable as I can about gravel pit mining, what's the ups and downs of that are, whether there's going to be blasting up there. Nobody's been able to really tell me that. Or crushing the rocks up there, which is a whole nother issue. And I don't, you know, I guess the DEQ of Wyoming is, looks into the air quality and perhaps the water quality to some extent. And so it's, it's a very delicate issue, and it's, it's an issue that, quite frankly, I don't think anybody's violating the law. Now, the issue comes to our zoning, and Wyoming state statute says that they have to comply with our zoning. And we have some zoning concerning this matter. And how it all, what all plays out will be after, it's like a jury trial. I don't, I don't know. I'm going to, you know, I go into a jury trial, and the judge and the jury hear all of the evidence, and they go back and they figure it out and they make a ruling. And so that's what's going to happen, just so everybody knows that. And we hear Mr. Nicolason calls on everybody who wants to come here, in here and, and say what they want to say about it. And so, and everybody wants a fair hearing. So, I intend to see that they get it. Thank you.
Commissioner North.
Couple of things. This afternoon, we had three more fires with this storm that rolled through due to lightning strikes. I know we had a little bit of moisture through it, but I don't think that's going to be enough to suppress the fire problem that we have. We had several of them this last weekend, and it's dry out there. I mean, it's really bad. And be careful. When I was working as a fire chief in Mills, we had several fires that were started by vehicles that were dragging chains, different things. I know other people that have had fires that have started in, by parking vehicles in tall grass and stuff like that. So be careful. Think about what you're doing and think about where you're out there. That's the first thing. Second thing is, with what happened last week on the 13th, that's a shame. Our country should be above assassinating or attempting to assassinate political rivals or people that you don't like. That's not a gun problem. That's a, that's a people problem. That's an evil that we have that, that starts at. And I brought it up this afternoon. That brings me back to what happened in 1968. We had two candidates that were assassinated and another one that was, that was almost killed during that same year, all running for political office. So, that's not who we should be as a country. That's not who we should focus on. We should focus on what's good. We have, we have a way of selecting the people that we have in office, and we're not a third-world country, and we don't need to act like one. And we need to respect people, all people, and, and we have the First Amendment for a reason, so we can actually speak our mind without having to worry about being persecuted. And whether you agree with somebody or not, that's not a reason to take violence and use violence to suppress their opinion either. So, I just wanted to bring that up tonight.
Commissioner Frill.
Don't really have a lot to add. I mean, fires have been covered. It is very dry out there right now, and so people just need to be careful with what you're doing as far as when it comes to flames. A lot of events going on. I'm sure Jim will talk about the fair, but that went off very well this year. Blume Fest just ended. We've got a lot of other activities coming up here real soon, so. And our regular issues that we're still dealing with. Now, we've got to deal with both sides of the mountain, so we'll take them one at a time. That's all I got.
Commissioner Miller.
Seems like the fires topic for tonight. Um, yeah, I'd just like to remind everybody that there is a burn ban on. You can get cited for having open fires, so don't have them. It's the easiest thing. Or the use of fireworks. It's that big fire down, what, Rock Springs, was it? That burnt up something just recently in the town. Sound like it was started by fireworks. There's been bonfires here and there within the county that need to stop until the weather, the conditions get a lot better. We don't need anything started that way. Going on to the fair, though, it was a good fair. Don't have the numbers. There was a lot of animals that were, that went through the auction ring, just over 1.6 million in sales, so that the kids really, you know, they were very supported. The carnival, everything worked out fairly well there. And the rodeo was a pretty good rodeo this year. Had some really good contestants, some people that walked in that, that we weren't expecting. So, yeah, we had some good, good contestants, some good rides, including the mutton busting kids. There's a couple of them that were pretty good. One kid got, ran into the wall and drug along the side, and, but he won. Tough little buggers out there. The, the, the one bad thing, though, with the fair this year was a brand-new bathroom, brand-new utilities there, dryers and whatnot, and somebody feels the need to destroy the county property. So, you know, it's, if anybody knows of who did it, let us know. You may get some money out of it. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioners. There's nothing better than mutton busting, whether it's your kid or somebody else's kid. Anyway, the, the, the fair was, fair and rodeo is great this year. I'm thankful that we have such a good fair board and such a good director, Tom Jones, out there. He works tirelessly, and anyway, they, they do a great job. And, and we know as commissioners that that is one of the, the highlights for our community, all segments of our community. So we support it and continue to support it. And anyway, that's, that's fun, and it's impressive what, what all the kids do and all the cowboys and cowgirls do out there. With respect to the gravel pit that's been proposed, we did get an update from our planning department today during our work session. And for folks that weren't able to listen in to that, our information is that there may be a meeting on July 25th. The county had not received an invitation as of this afternoon. We're expecting one, so we don't know when or where or what time. We made it clear that this commission doesn't want it to be a sham for a meeting to be at 10:00 a.m. on, on a Monday, for example. It, it needs to be one or, or two or more of these public meetings for the pre-applicant to give the community information. And we expect that the, the Prism Logistics and Mr. Tru will not only speak, but will listen and will respond to questions at those public meetings, or it does seem more like just a dog and pony show, which, which we don't think is consistent with the spirit and intent of what our regulations require. So, I know that one or more of the commissioners will be attending these, these meetings that are supposed to be held prior to the application being filed, and we'll be listening for some genuine effort on the part of Prism Logistics to, to actually have a conversation and participate. What we heard today also from our planning department was that the, oh, and we did clarify that the July 11th meeting that Prism held, that doesn't count toward the public meeting requirement, pre-application public meeting requirement. We did hear from our planning department that it was the intention, or it was stated by, by Prism to planning, that they intended to proceed with the county conditional use permit application simultaneously with whatever state proceedings would be occurring, and I believe that's with the DEQ on the, uh, DEQ permitting LMO or small mine. I'm, I'm not sure. We made our planning department aware that, that we didn't think that it should occur like that, that this commission wouldn't be in a good position to understand all the information and the requirements and/or the permits issued or not issued. So, I think it's this commission's intention to delay any conditional use permit application, at least hearings, until after the Prism Logistics has gotten through whatever state permitting would be required. So that's a little bit of a update from the commission with respect to the, the gravel pit. Last week, we, our sheriff received small notice, meaning, I think, a few hours advanced notice that Circle Drive, County Road 505, was going to be closed at approximately 1:45 p.m. That was Friday. It, in fact, was closed by the landowners, the Woodburys, who own a couple parcels of deeded land and, which is basically on either side of a whole bunch of BLM and, and state land. There was a cable or a rope put across two locations on the north and the south end. We have consulted with, with council, and I want the public to, to know that the county commission fully believes that that is a county road, and we're fully committed to it being a county road. We are in process of reopening that, and we expect that to be done in the immediate future. That's all I had. And I, I think at this point, we do have one additional executive session item as it relates to real estate. And I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing real estate acquisition and its related item is litigation or threatened litigation.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner North. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We're in executive session. When we return, we will just return for the purposes of adjourning the meeting. We won't have any additional items. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. We appreciate it. We won't have any additional items. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. We appreciate it.